Excuse me, here's. Uh, we can, uh, we don't have a quorum. Okay, perfect. I'm gonna work from this end. Um, yeah, excuse me, here's. No, he's not. Uh, we can, uh, we don't have a quorum. Uh, okay, don't. Perfect. Um, there's no public hearing. Excuse me, here's. No, he's not. This is all new business. Uh, we can, uh, we don't have a quorum. Okay, yes.
Testing, testing?
Um, there's no public hearing. Excuse me, here's. No, he's not. This is all new business. Uh, we can, uh, we don't have a quorum. Okay, yes.
Testing, testing?
Um, there's no public hearing. Excuse me, here's. No, he's not. This is all new business. Uh, we can, uh, we don't have a quorum.
Excuse me, here's.
Uh, we can, uh, we don't have a quorum. Okay, perfect. I'm gonna work from this end. Um, yeah, excuse me, here's. No, he's not. Uh, we can, uh, we don't have a quorum. Okay, don't. Perfect. Um, there's no public hearing. Excuse me, here's. No, he's not. This is all new business. Uh, we can, uh, we don't have a quorum. Okay, don't. Perfect. Um, there's no public hearing. Excuse me, here's. No, he's not. This is all new business. Uh, we can, uh, we don't have a quorum. Okay, don't. Perfect. Um, there's no public hearing. Excuse me, here's. No, he's not. This is all new business. Uh, we can, uh, we don't have a quorum. Okay, yes.
Testing, testing?
Um, there's no public hearing. Excuse me, here's. No, he's not. This is all new business. Uh, we can, uh, we don't have a quorum. Okay, yes.
Testing, testing?
Um, there's no public hearing. Excuse me, here's. No, he's not. This is all new business. Uh, we can, uh, we don't have a quorum.
Shepard, Lucy Payne, and then I am Ashley Fegley. And then Vern Gustafson is at the podium.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, first on the agenda is roll call.
Uh, yes, Chair Fegley?
Present.
Uh, Commissioner McGinnis?
Present.
Commissioner DeValle?
Present.
Commissioner Northcross?
Present.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, Payne?
Present.
And Commissioner Shepard?
Present.
Very good. Uh, we have a quorum.
Okay. Um, I do not believe we have any amendments or changes to the agenda tonight, correct?
No, this is approving, we're asking you to approve the agenda as printed.
Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
A second.
Thank you. Roll call?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Northcross?
Yes, to approve.
Uh, Commissioner DeValle?
Yes, to approve.
Uh, Commissioner McGinnis?
Yes, to approve.
Uh, Commissioner Payne?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes, to approve.
And Chair Fegley?
Yes, to approve.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, next are minutes, uh, meeting minutes for review from March 2nd, 2022. Uh, Commissioner DeValle, do you have any comments or questions or amendments or changes to the?
I do not.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner McGinnis, do you have any?
Only to flag that my last name has two N's in it. So, McGinnis, it's long and very lengthy, and I apologize, but that's what I got.
We'll make, we'll make that correction, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Northcross, do you have any changes?
No changes.
Commissioner Shepard, do you have any changes? Commissioner Payne, do you have any changes?
No, thank you.
I do not have any changes either. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call?
Uh, Commissioner Northcross?
Yes, to approve.
Uh, Commissioner DeValle?
Yes, to approve.
Uh, Commissioner Shepard?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Payne?
Yes, to approve.
Uh, Commissioner McGinnis?
Yes, to approve.
And lastly, Chair Fegley?
Yes, to approve.
And Ms. Parlov joining us right now, perfect.
Welcome.
Beautiful.
All right, next on the agenda is public hearings. I don't believe we have anything under that, so we can move forward.
No.
All right.
Correct, we just have site plan review.
All right, um, so on the agenda is SPR 22-07, preliminary site plan review for 951 Vanguard.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, uh, we do have the applicants and their staff engineers answer any specific questions. Uh, this is for a project on, uh, well, there's, it's vacant property. It's two parcels, and it is on Vanguard, right next door, on the south side of Vanguard, uh, just to the east of the FedEx terminal, if you remember that project back in 2019. And, uh, we are looking to, uh, it is currently zoned, uh, MUD, uh, mixed-use district, uh, and we're looking to do a site plan review, uh, for what they, from a company called Rise Commercial District. And they are, their tenants are multi-tenants that are in the, uh, commercial warehousing type of use, uh, that would be, is being proposed in 23 separate buildings within that site, uh, either being office, a warehouse, or a storage. And you'll see in the packet, there is definitely some different configurations within those 23 buildings in regards to either the square footage of the space, or as it relates to the, um, ceiling height, and also the shape and the size of the overhead doors that make it up, so it's, it varies in difference, uh, quite a bit. Let me go to the next slide. So, from a site summary standpoint, I think it's important that what we're, what we're doing tonight is looking for, uh, more on the preliminary review, kind of even, I would call it more of a schematic. Uh, within that MUD, um, and actually, this is the first MUD project that I have done here in the last four years. I think the last one was done at M1 Concourse. And within that MUD district, um, it's in our zoning ordinance, so we have those zoning regulations that we have to follow, but more importantly, it also has specific requirements as relates to that, uh, within that district. And that is all, then what happens is, once that final site plan becomes approved, uh, then we start working on a development agreement that you, as a commission, has full right to approve. It doesn't, it does not have to go onto council or anything else, so you have that, you have that ability. So here is a image of, uh, that's outlined in red, represents a rough location of the site, uh, just to say, uh, the north of, of that, it says the FedEx site. Also, it's right next, uh, to the east, I would say is going to, excuse me, west would be Haven. Across the street is the MDOT Service Center, and that's Vanguard Road, and then you can see Telegraph, oops, sorry. Um, I thought they had said a pointer on it, but it doesn't. Okay, sorry. Um, and then you have the Oakland Point Retail Center, and then just to the south of their site is the Stonegate, um, Development or Community. So from a zoning perspective, as I mentioned, uh, we're getting into in regards to a zoned MUD. When we worked on the FedEx project, we actually rezoned that property to, uh, M1, to allow it for freight, uh, freight terminal, even though, which was approved by the commission and sent on to, uh, city council. And it, it's kind of interesting, because if you look at the definition or the intent of that district, it really was intended to encourage, uh, a fully cohesive development, which, which starts to be there because of obviously Stonegate and the retail component and so forth, but I think this was done, this zoning map and also our zoning ordinance was done in 2012. And so what we're seeing is, is back in the day, 10 years ago, there was a considerable movement in regards to planning and development to kind of create these smaller, combined, totally mixed-use developments that were located on these vacant parcels. This obviously being the Clinton Valley Center. Um, same thing with the SP District that we have, that was, um, for the former Silverdome site. So when you had this acreage, it was, it was something that we as planners thought was a great idea to create these little villages or little hamlets with this total mixed use, but I, what's happened 10 years from now, we have a whole new, um, a new economy. We have, we have a pandemic, we have a post-pandemic in regards to how people are shopping and how people are living, um, how people, in regards to office space and all of that, and that's being, trying to be figured out, not just from a, from a zoning perspective, but also from a master plan perspective also. Next slide in regards to future land use, um, here, uh, it looked, as you can see, is in that blue area with the red outline, and so that's the site. Uh, you can see, uh, further, uh, to the south of that, that's Stonegate. Uh, in purple represents the, uh, Oakland Point Retail Center, and FedEx would be over to the east at the end of Vanguard Drive. And again, with the Civic, and again, I think it would, I gather that, why we did that, because there is a number of parcels that are relatively close to this area that is owned by Oakland County. So I think that the premise was to either expand upon their development, or I even saw some notes a while ago that talked about maybe that that would be a great location for, uh, City Hall and the police department and the fire department back in the day. Um, that never materialized, so we're gonna be, obviously, from a master plan perspective, which was, last one was done in 2014, so we're gonna be, obviously, pulling together, um, a very, and hopefully, it's critically important to make those revisions to that project. So from standards in regards to site plan review, and keep in mind, um, and the applicants are here to get into providing a little bit more detail in regards to their product and what's gonna be proposed on here, um, we're gonna take a close look in regards to hierarchy of, of circulation, uh, not just coming off of Telegraph, but also on Vanguard, understanding the, um, existing use that's there, particularly in regards to FedEx, um, and that terminal traffic, and regards to how that would maybe impact here, and definitely internal circulation, uh, in regards to making sure that's, uh, meets all the building and safety and fire, uh, department reviews, which will be done at a later time. Um, same thing in regards to buildings, in regards to where they're located, uh, would it be impactful, and trying to, um, not provide any, um, constraints or impacts upon adjacent development. And I think in regards to natural features, as we, as you know, and you, if you, if you drove by this site, you're looking at a relatively, or basically a vacant parcel, or two parcels. And so we're gonna be having, obviously, working with them to kind of create those natural features uh, back on the site within their development. Um, and then, as it relates to the final item in regards to site layout and screening, I think it's equally important that we adhere to those requirements. And in your packet, and I don't have it on the screen, they did a very good job of doing some cross-sections uh, that illustrates the level of grade from the Stonegate neighborhood versus where the proposed site is gonna be located. And I think it's kind of interesting, because, um, especially with PEA, they were the, the, um, engineers of FedEx, and they did, if you remember correctly, we always talked about, it was like, create, they created a dish. Yeah. And then they, what they did was they built up from there, around them, even because the grades are higher at Stonegate, they even built it up even further because of balancing the site and so forth. And if you look at the natural grades now, and you're looking at sightlines, they're probably not gonna even see any of the height of any of those buildings that are there right now, just in schematic form, but I'm sure you, you need to take a look at that. And then in regards to the mixed, you know, mixed-use district in regards to what's important, it, it talks about, you know, certain goals and objectives of that MUD district in regards, and talk about diversity of housing, and you gotta think about it in regards to the entire area that's zoned as an MUD in regards to Stonegate development. You're seeing more of condos coming in there. Uh, Century Home has been buying up quite a few single-family plated lots, um, and building single-family homes, either two-story or one-story. And I, I think it's also important in regards to understanding in regards to other types of commercial type of uses that are coming into the area also. And we're gonna take a close look in regards to our C4, which is called Suburban Commercial. And if you remember correctly, we, um, did some adjustments to our ordinance in regards to our C4 district, which allowed for more of medical-based type of facilities, like healthcare, emergency care, uh, plasma centers going into these various districts. So we're gonna be taking a close look in regards to how we portray that in the future. And then as you're kind of questioning, and including your packet, was that MUD regulations? And within those regulations, you're kind of wondering where the warehousing and storage kind of fits in. And at the very bottom, number five, it talks about other principal permitted uses that are allowed, which is what we call IP1, which is an industrial park. Those types of uses are permitted, and so by stating that in number five within the MUD, that's where this type of proposed commercial warehouse, office, storage facility is permitted by right within the MUD. So there's no special exemption permit, there's no other rezonings that are needed as relates to that. And I think it, it's important that, also, it talks about certain development regulations that I mentioned before in regards to, there is, we have our standard ordinance requirements, and then within that MUD, they have additional requirements as relates to open space requirements of 10% of the gross area, uh, the overall access, uh, to the site, and also for, from a, not just from a motor vehicle, but also pedestrian, uh, definitely looking at and making sure that the signs conform. And it's interesting, the signs are kind of, again, kind of, not, they're not, not kind of, they are, they're mimicking our sign ordinance in the downtown, so they're relatively small, so there might be some variances in regards to what the applicant will be asking, uh, maybe in the future, as relates to this. And we're gonna find out more of that as we get into the technical final site plan review following this meeting. And then also, it's important, so we have that, and as we continue in regards to site lighting, landscaping, um, how it relates in regards to, um, overall architectural features in regards to the various buildings, screening, and then also in regards to, uh, utilities and also transformers and dealing with all of that. And I think it's important to note that in that development district, there is specific items that would be required as part of that development district, similar to what was done at M1 Concourse, in regards to, it would follow the site plan or the final site plan review, uh, that was, that will be completed, um, providing us with all the detailed information in regards to building elevations, materials, colors, um, talking about trash receptacles, uh, conformance with the future land use plan, uh, among other types of requirements, uh, that you could even, um, I've even seen in regards to, uh, the hours of operation, um, the number of, of vehicle, trip, truck, or trip traffic, uh, that could be questionable. Uh, I know that sometimes, and if you look in very closely within that, in those MUD requirements, they even talks about maybe potentially in regards to looking at some traffic analysis as part of this type of project. So here you have a, just the overall site, as we talked about, so you have Vanguard at the north end with, where the, where the cul-de-sac is located, located on the, uh, located at the dead end, technically of Vanguard. To the south would be Stonegate, uh, Community, uh, to the, uh, right of your screen would be FedEx, and then to the left of the screen would be Haven. You're looking at configuration of roughly 28, or excuse me, 23 buildings that would be located on this site. They also provided, uh, some images in regards to some renderings, in regards to how some of the, uh, buildings, particularly up towards the front of a Vanguard would look like. And if you look very closely in your packet, it did show in regards to, those were more, um, office spaces that could be, uh, rented or leased out, uh, for smaller businesses that could be located within this kind of a complex. Um, kind of gives you a certain flavor. Again, all the materials and all of that information hasn't come forth. I, I really feel, we really believe that, I just wanted, we, internally within our division, really wanted to give you an insight in regards to this type of use. It is permitted, it's definitely gonna go through a, um, extensive review to make sure, from a technical standpoint, that it does meet all the various requirements that we have, uh, placed within our zoning ordinance, and any other types of recommendations that the commission has any questions on. They did provide us with, um, a number of elevations, you can kind of see, and you start, you can see some of the ones that, you know, on the north elevations, uh, facing more of the Vanguard, the south elevation, and you can kind of see in regards to, you know, some of them have more, uh, just, um, single-door type access to a number of the buildings, some also have a single door plus also an overhead door. Uh, sometimes, depending on the configuration on the inside, uh, you'll have, just on, you're just on the east elevation, you will have access on the back elevation, on the west elevation, you won't. And then we get into other types of, uh, buildings that have very limited type of, uh, for lack of a better term, uh, character, but also functioning as it's supposed to be intended in regards to, uh, allowing for just single-door or overhead door access to some of the buildings on the north elevation. And also, you'll see, and particularly, like here, you can see the length of the building, um, is in certain feet, and then here we show a smaller, uh, length, so you're having, again, different sizes, different buildings in regards to ceiling height, either 12 or 16 feet, looking at it in regards to door access of overhead doors, some are, are larger than others. So it just, I'm just trying to give you an idea in regards to that type of character and the type of buildings that will be mixed within that site. So, in regards to, as we get into, um, next steps, in regards to what we're asking, from our initial review of this preliminary plan, uh, there is, uh, we need to make, the landscape plan needs to be completed, um, signed and sealed. We're looking at existing conditions approval, that, what that means is that we take that existing survey, we have our city engineer, uh, or, and/or its consultant to take a close look in regards to, um, that, that information is correct. Um, site lighting, looking at building materials, uh, colors, any architectural details, looking at building in regards to the signs, we understand that signs usually come in at a little bit later date once the building plans are all, uh, approved, and they start getting constructed, and then the applicant usually starts to come in, in regards to buildings, uh, signage, either, um, either on the building or ground-mounted signs, uh, especially in regards to approval in regards to circulation plan, that particularly comes into play, not just in regards to the fire department, but also the city engineer. Same thing with utilities and drainage, that, again, city engineer, um, and also, uh, the Oakland County Water Resource Commission would spend some time taking a look at that. Um, and also, part of that would be the development agreement, uh, the lot combination, which would be required. And secondly, um, what is recommended, um, is to have the applicant, uh, work, or have a, reach out to the Stonegate community and have them, um, talk about their project with them to inform them of what is happening in their backyard. Okay? And that's, that's my presentation. Uh, the applicant and the engineer is here, if you have any further questions and details you would like to ask, feel free, or if there's any questions that I can answer, I'd be more than happy to.
I just have a quick question. Um, this is preliminary site plan approval, does that mean this, this project's gonna come back in front of us for a final?
Yes.
Okay. Um, would the applicant like to approach the podium and add anything further? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Jeremy Haynes. My address is 8070 Castleton Road, Indianapolis, Indiana. Um, so a little ways away from here. Uh, good evening to you, um, I represent Rise Commercial District, I'm the growth manager for, for Rise. Um, Rise is a business accelerator, um, so we have quite a few, uh, small to large businesses. Our makeup is about 40%, large businesses, 60% small. Um, some of our, our tenants in the past have been, uh, people such as Cardinal Health, AT&amp;T, Verizon, and, uh, some others. Uh, so we have a really good mixture of tenants within the business park. It is a business-only park, there are no consumers, it's not like a consumer self-storage. Uh, we accelerate and grow businesses, uh, we do that, um, throughout our sites. Um, our co-warehousing, uh, is a unique, and it's a new concept, uh, most people are not aware of it, um, and it's something that, uh, we believe is kind of a first pioneering moving, uh, movement across the US. Uh, maybe some other people are starting to do it, uh, but we've been doing this now for about 10 years. Um, our warehouses range anywhere from about 300 square feet to 2,000 square feet. Uh, the gist of it is, you know, we have, uh, a number of local businesses within, within the neighborhood. Uh, the wife is tired of the husband working out the house and, you know, wants to free up some space in the garage, or there is valuable equipment in the streets. Um, so what we do is we offer a place for these different businesses to remove those, um, their materials from the streets, bring it into our secure district, operate out from there, um, and accelerate within. Um, additionally, we also have, um, a bunch of, uh, Amazonians, as, as Vern mentioned, uh, pandemic has changed quite a bit, and retail has changed quite a bit, uh, you know. However you look at it, uh, times are changing, and, uh, people love to receive items in the mail. Uh, so Amazonians, um, are part of our makeup as well. Amazon typically ships about 62% of their product out of their main warehouses. Uh, the remainder, um, of the shipments that go out are, are warehouses or facilities like ours. Uh, so we have quite a few tenants that, uh, you know, maybe they are, uh, they deal more with like chocolates or makeup or what have you, the list goes on. Um, this will be our 13th location, we have, uh, quite a few locations in Indiana and Ohio. Um, this will be our first in Michigan, we're looking up in Minnesota, Tennessee, all throughout the Midwest area. Um, so this is not our, our first time, we've been gaining, uh, quite a bit of experience throughout the 10 years that we've been doing this, and been enjoying that. Uh, the front of the, uh, when you first come into the site, you're gonna see buildings 15 and 16 generally. Um, these buildings have more of a office presence to them, whereas the buildings in the back have more of a warehouse component. Um, our tenants have, you can see there the, the front buildings. Our tenants have different needs, they're all different, and as such, they're gonna have some different needs. Um, some won't need the office space, but some will. Uh, I think, uh, floor fitters in our Indianapolis location that will have clients come in and look at the samples, and, uh, they're able to meet with those clients, but also have the warehousing component in the back as well. So where these businesses may start small, um, and not have the means and ability to go out and rent a large facility, uh, they're able to share this space with other similar businesses at a much more affordable rate, um, and also share some great, uh, amenities such as wifi, uh, forklifts, a conference room, uh, a very small kitchenette, and just some other nice things that are, you know, they may use once a week, or maybe it's a monthly kind of a thing, or maybe they use it every day, but they can share, uh, that pooled amenity together, uh, so that's a great feature. Um, so generally, businesses will stay with us for about three years typically, some will stay longer. Um, I think of one of our oldest clients who's been with us for like 11 years, but more or less, people stay with us for around three years. Um, and the thing that's really, uh, unique and interesting about it is, um, you know, we, we do what we say we're gonna do, we grow businesses, and so they'll accelerate, they'll grow and develop their company, um, and they'll, they'll outgrow their space. So they'll leave us, um, in their search for finding a larger facility that they can operate out of, and that's great. Um, the neat benefit of that is they usually stay local right within the community. Um, all of our statistics point that they stay within about three miles of our Rise facility. Um, so as far as it concerns with the city of Pontiac, um, it's a diversified and a dynamic investment, because as the city, as these, uh, these businesses move away move away from Rise, that leaves a hole for another business to come in, accelerate, and they're all staying within the local area of Pontiac. So I think that's a pretty interesting and unique concept. It also, for the city, it will increase the property tax substantially, which will also boost the economy of the city as well. So I feel like it's a nice meet for everyone around. It boosts the cities. It helps businesses grow. We're about small businesses, and it offers a great facilities for these businesses to operate out of. So that's kind of a quick elevator speech. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Duvall, do you have any comments or questions for the applicant?
I do. So what do you estimate your percentage of occupancy to be upon day one, soon as, when you open the doors?
That's going to vary per site. I know our newest one, we were at 95% occupancy in three months. So there is a huge need for this.
Within three months?
Within three months. And so I would say, I believe it's, our oldest three or four sites are completely occupied with huge waiting lists. But typically, we operate within that like 90, 95% on the newer sites.
That's it. Commissioner McGinnis, do you have any comments or questions?
Well, thank you very much for choosing Pontiac, Michigan as the first entree into the dynamic Michigan market.
Absolutely.
How many buildings are we looking at on this preliminary site plan?
Yep. In this site, site plan, there are 23 buildings.
And of the 23, you know, if, if the preliminary becomes, in fact, the, the final outcome, how many individual units could there be in theory?
That's a great question. I wish either sales got here. And that will just fluctuate depending on the buildings. Becky probably don't know that. Some of the larger facilities in the back are so large that they have drive-throughs, whereas the buildings in the front there have the smaller, more broken down. It really depends on the building type. I don't know if I could answer that accurately for you.
Comprehensive though, if you look at all 23 buildings cumulatively, are we talking 80 plus?
Maybe a better way to approach that question is this site will house about 125 different businesses.
That's helpful.
That's going to represent about 450 employees. And again, that might sound like start raising some alarms in your, like, wow, that will increase traffic a lot. Our gate count is really low. On a daily average, we're about 125 on our gate count. So like, some of these people, businesses, businesses will come like once a month. Others will be like once a week. So it really is a big mix. Our gate count's still low. I would also say that our, our dependency on city resources is very low. In the 10-plus years we've been doing this, we've never had a fire call or a police call. We use very little water. We're not really tapping into school systems at all. So, you know, these are businesses that love what they're doing. They care about their employees, their product. It's not, it's just your general average consumer.
I think you alluded to, but at the cul-de-sac of sorts, are we looking at a gated entrance for the Rise Commercial District?
That's correct.
And do you expect to have sort of dedicated onsite staff from Rise, or is it essentially self, self-governed by the respective leased occupied spaces?
That's good. Great question. We always have one person onsite, and they are typically there for your usual 8 to 4:30 or whatever. Access can happen 24/7. You know, these people need access to their offices and buildings and things like that. Generally, most people are there between the working hours that we see, or we'll have landscapers that come and meet early in the morning, and then off they go, and then they'll park their vehicles in the evening.
If Pontiac or Oakland County entrepreneurs, as your process and project is, is rolling forth, are they able to sort of secure their place early on in terms of pre, pre-sales, pre-leasing? What, what would you recommend to those that are beginning to get word of this exciting opportunity?
Yeah, great question. We do pre-leasing. I don't know the exact date on that. That might be like three months out from opening or something like that. It's not super far out. A lot of people will talk to our sales representative and ask all sorts of great questions, and he'll kind of keep them updated on things. We pre-lease pretty close to our launch date.
How many acres are we contending with for the community's benefit?
I believe it's roughly about 15, 16.
Okay. And so no zoning changes are required. Are there any anticipated tax considerations that'll be pursued by this development, be they brownfield, et cetera? Nothing is applicable on this particular project, is it?
That hasn't been discussed. It's all market-based. There won't be anything in regard, any city incentives that would be needed for this project to be performed.
For your Indiana and Ohio sites, are they all sort of referred to as Rise Commercial District? Do they sort of have localized names for each of them? What should we anticipate with the finished product?
We'll call it Rise Pontiac and keep it short. That way, that way we know the actual location. But if people are asking the broader, we'll say Rise Commercial District. Generally, we go by the actual city.
Rise Pontiac works great from my, from my layman's ears.
It has a nice ring to it.
That's right. And can you elaborate for our benefit, what led you to choose this particular site and our beautiful city?
That's a great question. We have quite a process in which we evaluate a lot of demographics, driving ranges, income levels, and just that mixture. I mean, there's a few more factors in there. So some cities will be disqualified, or they don't have good access to an air state. Pontiac really checks all the boxes for, for us. It looks like a great community, especially driving businesses are very important for our tenants as well.
Thank you. I want to defer to my colleagues if there's any further questions, but I'll share that this is a very sort of hallowed historic site where this property will stand. 440 acres of what was a national historic site.
That's right.
The Eastern Michigan asylum, later the Pontiac State Hospital, and then Clinton Valley Center. My great uncle, great, great uncle was a patient there from the early 1900s until his death in 1956, and for over 30 years was a patient there, tending to the gardens and the agriculture. It almost had like a self-sustaining food-based production and just a very beautiful aesthetic rolling campus in addition to the amazing Victorian Gothic architecture. So, on the very space where one of your 100-plus potential tenants might be, my great, great uncle once might have been tending to the field. Pontiac is a very special community with an amazing past and amazing future to come. And so I'm grateful that you've, you've chosen Pontiac as your first foray. It's a very strategic site in a very strategic community. The, the surrounding neighbors, both commercial, industrial, and residential, are, are very special and important to us, and so it'll be very valuable for Rise's success as well as for their benefit to have open lines of communication, be able to be candid and, and transparent, and they will appreciate it. They'll benefit from it, and Rise will appreciate and benefit from it. So the respective institutions that are nearby, we encourage you to have those early conversations and do that engagement. Obviously, there's some technical requirements that will be triggered, but the more expansive, the better, because this is a, a part of the city that has room for more growth and, and more improvement and enhancement, and we would want Rise to be an accelerant to that, not a detriment. Nothing in this, this preliminary site plan review is detrimental from my vantage point. I have notified, I'm, I'm on the city council and sort of I'm their liaison, so that way we can have a very collaborative working relationship. I have shared this information. It's gone to all of our colleagues on the city council, but I did have in-depth conversations with Councilman Brett Nicholson, who's city council district number two, includes this, this particular property as well as the residents of the Stonegate neighborhood. And, and so they, that would be an important opportunity when the time is right, so that way those neighbors can know what's going in nearby. And as Mr. Gustafson already shared, there's, there's already further development afoot with new residential, single-family homes and potential new condominium developments there that are expanding on what is a very lovely place to live, and we hope to have a, a more thriving Oakland Point shopping center nearby as well. But I'm grateful for the opportunity for Pontiac to consider this, and it's a very good best practice for preliminary site plan reviews to come before the planning commission. So thank you for having these early conversations, so that way we don't have the more painful backend conversations of, well, if only you had come preliminarily, if that's a word, that we, we might have avoided that headache. And of course, your valuable time, your resources, the professional renderings and all the other professional work that has to go into doing this project right. What is your anticipated timeframe?
I think that Becky can speak a little bit more into the actual design timeline. Is it appropriate for you to come up and talk about that? Okay. I'll let her speak into that. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Becky Klein. I'm with PEA Group. Our address is 2430 Rochester Court in Troy, Michigan, and I am the lead engineer on this project. So essentially there, we wish to build this as soon as we can get the permits. So that process from today is probably a good two months out. So I'm anticipating that if everything goes well, we'll be under construction towards the end of May. So the, the plan is to get this thing open this year.
And to that point, to Commissioner Duvall's point, to allow us to elaborate that further, the idea is that it's rocking and rolling within months of that opening. So if we were doing a, one year later from this conversation, we'd be, in theory, having a fully complete site, fully occupied, thriving, and life is great.
That would be the ideal. I think everybody in the room would be delighted if that works out that way, yes.
Thank you very much for the information. No further questions.
Commissioner Northcross, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes. Again, thank you for thinking of Pontiac. This is an exciting project. Just reviewing it though, it looks like a lot of buildings in a, it's a big space. I mean, it's 15 acres, but it still looks like a lot of buildings very close together. My first question, does this meet the 10% requirement for open space?
Yes, it does in fact meet the requirements. So that, that, yes, there is a lot of pavement there, and we've pretty much maximized the allowable pavement, but there is sufficient green space around the perimeter for us to create the landscaping that we need to create, and it does meet open space requirements.
And the movement of people in the site back and forth, is that something that should be considered, or your experience?
Well, the way the site is laid out, now I'll defer to Jeremy for some more specifics, but as you look at it, it is laid out much like a mini storage warehouse would be. So the back portions away from Vanguard Drive, those areas are going to function much like mini storage units, with the caveat that they'll be accessed only by one or two or three businesses per building. And those, those users will go in there once a day or twice a day or once a week, depending on what their needs are, access their equipment, and then leave to go out and do the various jobs that they have offsite. So in terms of circulation within the site, you'll probably have less congestion than you would in a typical mini warehouse facility in the summertime when you've got a lot of people moving and they're all trying to bring in or take out their stuff at the same time. And sometimes you get cars and trailers everywhere.
Yeah.
So I don't anticipate there being any internal circulation issues. And then, as Jeremy had previously said, the gate count is on this, on these facilities are actually pretty low. So the amount of traffic coming down Vanguard and, and accessing the property on a daily basis will be relatively small, and it won't impact traffic patterns very greatly at all.
What are the guidelines that are in place for the types of businesses that come in?
I'll have to defer to Jeremy on that.
Happy to answer that question. We do not allow any kind of extreme welding or manufacturing, especially like automotive. We really rule that out. There might be some light assembly or disassembly. Again, it's mostly Amazonians or storage, you know, Joe Plummer, you know, electricians, things like that nature.
And I was just looking at the plans, and I didn't see much in terms of storm drains. Looking at the FedEx site, they have this wonderful retention pond.
Right. And I, I was involved in the design of the FedEx facility, so I can tell you it was very challenging at the time to get the drainage worked out on that project because they had, they have and they are still receiving storm water from the MDOT facility and from this property that we're looking at today. So if you walked out to the vacant field right now, you could actually find a couple of drainage structures that pick up all the overland water when it rains and take it down to that pond. So the pond on the FedEx property was designed with the future development of all these surrounding properties in mind.
Ah.
So that it is correctly sized to hold the runoff from this property. So that is why we don't have a pond for you, because that water was already master planned for in the FedEx development. And we have designed this site to stay within the planned runoff volume that was designed in that original FedEx project. So you'll actually see, if you flip through the drawings, that I've included a sheet from the original master plan, and I'm demonstrating that we, we fall within the requirements of that, that program.
Okay. Good, good. Yeah, I, I guess my only concern is that in the future, you know, we're putting a lot of, and, and this is not your, I think your project is designed well, but just in general, how much pavement that we put into the city and how that adds up into a whole bunch of things that happen down the road in terms of heat and water runoff and other things.
Right.
And that was the reason I asked the question about the 10%.
Right.
And it looks like you're right there at the minimum requirement.
Yeah, we're, we're pretty close to, to the margins on that. But we are meeting the requirements, and our storm system will function as it should, and it won't endanger any of the neighbors or put too much water into the Augusta Drain, which is the county drain on the northeast edge of the FedEx site that ultimately gets all this water.
Yeah. I, I was out there the other day, and I'm walking around, I'm hearing all this water running. And yeah, yeah, there is that drain, and it looks like it's heading toward the retention pond there at FedEx. And I says, hmm. So, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Of course.
Thank you. I, no other questions at this time.
Commissioner Shepard, do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you. First of all, I, I love the concept. I love the project. I think it's something that's needed. So I'm, I'm definitely on, on that same page. I think my, my questions to you would be materials. I mean, your renderings, your drawings look great. I think that's what we'll all be picky about, is when you bring them back to us, are you actually kind of following through with those materials? So just be mindful of that.
Yep.
I think that'll save a lot of problems. So, and I know your clients are going to want it to look that way too, so I know that's what you guys do. Your tenant mix, I'd be curious of examples of some of your other properties and what a typical tenant mix is. I, I appreciate the fact that you're not going to have car repair. I'm assuming you're not going to have people able to stack cars out front.
Right.
Overnight storage, stuff like that on the outside. Is there any external storage to it?
Yeah, we don't allow for any external storage of that nature. So people will come, and you can see on there, there is strip parking as well. And so that's, that's where we generally have people park, but we don't, we don't do like overnight storage or parking or things like that. So.
And tenant mix, what do you, and you, and some of your other places, what's, what's an idea? What are we going to see in these places?
I mean, it really will fluctuate based on the businesses and needs of the city. I, if it's helpful, I could provide a PDF with a typical tenant mix of generally what you can expect.
I don't need a perfect answer. I'm just curious. Are these, are they, are they people that are, like you said, Amazonians, which is a new term I've never heard? Are they, are they typically plumbers? Are they, I mean, the, the main mix, is that kind of what you're thinking? And are they coming from typically Pontiac, you've done your demographics, you've looked at it. Are they coming from Bloomfield? Where do you think most of your people are coming from?
Do you think that the tenant?
Do you know that?
It's in there. If you look at the back of your packet, the last three or four pages are actually one of their glossy marketing brochures that, that gives a kind of a general sense.
That's, that's not this?
It's the very end.
That's in here? Okay.
Couple pages.
In the back.
So if you read down through the tenant mix.
Right, I saw that.
It's going to fluctuate, obviously, but you can expect more or less that kind of a mixture is what we're looking at.
Great. Look forward to seeing it.
Wow.
Thank you.
Impressive. Commissioner Shepard, do you have any comments or questions?
I do. Good evening. Thank you both for being here. I appreciate your taking the time so you can answer our questions and bring the project to us for consideration. The question that Mr. Northcross asked was who will and will not be allowed to lease, and you kind of touched on that. If, and I see this as somewhat like And I see this as somewhat like an incubator for businesses that are trying to find space that isn't necessarily an office space. So if I wanted to start a cooking company, and I wanted to make cakes, and I'm going to start production, is that something that's allowed in here? Is food production allowed in here?
We don't really have the setup for people with ovens, refrigerators, and especially water usage, where it's not really a place that people come to bake cakes, per se. Trying to think of our tenant mix as far as like food. We do have some people that will look in more into the food industry. We have, for example, there is one of our tenants in Indianapolis who collects rare mushrooms for fancy restaurants, you know. And like, so you get all sorts of people. But again, as far as high demands of electricity or water, that's really not what we're about.
So, okay, so that actually leads into the next question. What is the... How do you structure the lease with your tenants? Do you provide tenant improvements for them? What are they responsible for? How long are their leases? What's the lease rate per square foot? So can you expand on that a little bit?
I can answer that partially. I know that we do month-to-month with our tenant, or maybe there's like a year-long agreement, but that's typically what you can expect as far as the tenant lease duration is what we're looking at. I don't know if I have the... Again, I need my sales guy here to speak, because he's in that all day long as far as the amount that we charge per... I don't have that information, sorry.
So do they get a blank space? Do they need to improve their space? Do you give them things? How does it work with you guys?
Yeah, so typically, you know, they'll have the open space, and if they want to work to add to there, configure that, I think they have some limited ability to do that. Typically, what I see when I'm on the sites is people will set up a lot of the kind of storage racks is what you're looking at, or kind of partitioned storage rack, just depends on that for that client. They're not making drastic changes. You know, they're not sub partitioning that a whole lot. I don't see them doing that. I'm not sure if that's even allowed in the agreement or not. I don't see the evidence, so.
I have been in some facilities that are in our neighboring communities that are similar to what your rendering shows on the back of the property, which would be the south part of the property, where it seems like it's storage, outdoor storage or contained storage, and they operate their businesses out of that. It's almost like a very crude way of running a business. Is that what this will ultimately be? What are we going to... What would we see if we walked into these spaces?
Yeah, great question. Again, most people, I would say, they're coming there, they're getting their equipment, they leave, or they're coming once a week or like once a month. Some will operate out of their space. Sorry, rephrase your question there again?
I've seen what you have on the south part of the property, where people operate their business out of what is like a storage, U-Haul storage space. You know, here's your garage door, you roll it up, or where you store things when you've got too much in your house, and you go, you know, do your self-storage. They run businesses out of places like that, which I'm shocked that some communities allow it, but they do. So is that what ultimately can potentially happen here?
Thank you for rephrasing that. So again, with the tenants are Amazonians, they're in there, they're working their goods, they're shipping out and things like that. Yeah, please, go ahead.
So based on what I've learned in reviewing the preliminary layouts of the internals of these buildings, so again, like he said, you'll have a mix of clients. You may have a plumber, and a plumber doesn't typically have a showroom. You call him up, you say your sink is clogged or your toilet's not working, and he drives out to your home with a van, does his work, and then goes back. So he would probably rent one of the units that are more southerly on this property, because all he needs is a space to maybe set up some racking, keep his parts in there, keep his equipment in there, and that's it. He isn't going to have anybody coming in to sit down and have meetings. He's not going to have a showroom where he shows off fixtures to people. Somebody who has a small business, like maybe doing wood floors, might have one of the office spaces up closer to Vanguard Drive, because those buildings along the frontage do have a nice facade. They have a small office area up front, so they're designed to allow small numbers of the public to come in. So he might have a small showroom where he can show flooring samples. And then behind that little office area, he could access more traditional warehousing space where he might keep his flooring until he takes it out and installs it.
Okay.
So that's the kind of difference in the mix. So you'd have the more public-oriented tenants up front and the companies that really don't need a public space in the back.
So, okay, so that then leads the question to the question of, how many of these buildings or what percentage of these buildings will have lavatory facilities? Because you're not going to be necessarily needing one at the far back, but if you've got public coming in...
Right.
How many of those would have that, do you think?
So basically, any of the ones that you see that are adjacent to that public parking area up front...
Okay.
Those are going to have traditional offices with public spaces and restrooms.
Okay.
Some of the buildings towards the back will also have small offices, because they may need to have somebody manning their phone all day. You know, your Joe Plummer might have a receptionist in there all day, but she doesn't actually meet the public, but she'll have a little space, and there'll be a restroom in there for her. But the bulk of the building will just be traditional warehouse. And then some of the buildings are pure warehousing altogether with no lavatories at all, and those would be just the pure storage facilities. And like you said, the small delivery subcontractors for Amazon might stick their deliveries in there and just use the space to sort it out, load their van, go make a delivery, come back, grab the next load, and go again.
Okay. So on the rendering, there's the three buildings, which would be more on the left side, which would be the west side, with the green space between them. What does that actually represent?
So that actually represents... That green space is in fact grass.
Okay.
And there's a walkway down the middle, because there are some accesses to the backside of the building for mechanical rooms and potentially for employees to get into back areas of the building.
Okay. The rendering doesn't show any landscape.
No, it does not.
And I would anticipate there needs to be some sort of buffer on the south side, Vern?
Yes.
Probably on all sides?
And in fact, there's a little bit of information on there. If you look into the plan pages towards the back, I've actually got a plan that shows a profile. The site as it currently exists, that property line on the south that's kind of curvy, is shared with Stonegate Condominium.
Mm-hmm.
And there's actually a big berm there already...
Okay.
That has trees planted on it, and that will remain. We're going to cut into that berm a little bit, and actually, our site is going to sit lower than most of Stonegate. And a retaining wall will hold the berm up. We will also add landscaping in there to, you know, densify it even further. But somebody who drives along in that northerly road in Stonegate, it's called Arusha Drive, if they look to their left, all they're going to see is that berm going up and the trees planted on it. And they may catch a little glimpse of the top of the roof line of one of our buildings, but that's all they're going to see.
Okay.
And then, yes, we will be adding the requisite landscaping around the perimeter. We'll have a nice planting area along the road frontage, as required by the ordinance. And those plans are going to come to you guys so that you can review the detailed planting.
And that will be all, we do that final segment review. And like I mentioned, if you remember correctly, we talked about that dish where FedEx was located.
Yeah.
It's kind of the same whole...
Right.
The same concept in regard to basically creating this area that would be protecting kind of Stonegate development from any views and so forth. And I would say that I have not heard any complaints whatsoever from FedEx being located at that site. I mean, I haven't seen anything, I haven't heard anything, as you put what FedEx and what PEA had done in regards to the extra flooring, those drains, all of that has been critical in regards to engineering as we go through that development.
I know. I could tell it would be a challenge, and I don't do what you do, so I appreciate what you had to do.
Right.
So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
I do have some comments about the elevation. Can you go back to where we saw some of the... Yes, that. Is that a signature look for Rise? Can you talk about that a little bit?
It's actually a new look that we recently came out with this winter that will be the standard, ongoing look for our sites. We recognize that we need to update the front, especially of those front buildings as you're entering in, to make it look really attractive and appealing. You know, it'd be great to put brick all throughout all the sites, but we also want to keep our rates reasonable for our tenants as well. So there's a nice balancing ethic goes into that.
When I look at that, I think of the Wild Wild West movies with the parapet and Yolde Saloonie. I just... That leaves me very cold. I'm being very honest with you. That does nothing for me. So if I drove past that today, when it was done, and I would think, boy, there's so many interesting materials out there, and there's so many great opportunities for design, is there any way that that could be reconfigured without having to necessarily increase your cost? I understand that's a concern, but that's just so uninspiring to me.
Yeah, I would have to consult with our architects. From what I understand with this model, some of the material, I think on the top, maybe you may be able to do a variable material on that, but this is the look that they're wanting to really roll with, so.
Is the anticipation that you're hiding the HVAC units up there? Why... What's the purpose of that facade?
It's to give it just some architectural interest as opposed to just the, you know, the tops being kind of angled, how it is, so.
Okay. All right. Well, if those are all my questions...
We'll never please everyone, and I understand that.
I appreciate that you won't. I appreciate that. And there's a lot of really beautiful things about the project, and I understand that you're filling a very desperate need for a lot of people. But when you leave, we have that, so I want to make sure that it all works well together for all of us.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Shepherd, do you have any... Or Payne, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, most of my questions have been answered, but good evening.
Good evening.
And welcome to the City of Pontiac.
Thank you.
And thank you for your interest with this really different and nice-looking concept. I like the Wild Wild West look.
Some people like it, some people...
I think it's different. I think it's engaging. And one of the questions that I had was in regards to the green space. So that's been answered. The drainage has been answered. The surrounding, you know, houses and all of that that's going on in that shopping plaza there, that has been answered. The retention pond, parking spaces. How many parking spaces will you have per unit? Or will it be designed that way per unit, your parking space?
Well, it's a mix. And of course, it's going to fluctuate as the tenant mix shifts and changes throughout the years. So we had to work a compromise when we were calculating what the required parking for this facility is per the City of Pontiac. And so we actually... And you can't really read it on this screen, but we put together a matrix that takes every building and classifies the square footage either as warehouse, as office, or as light industrial space. And then we applied the parking ordinance that you guys have for each of those classifications. And we have created that number of parking spaces on this plan.
On average?
On average, yeah. So it... Over time, it is possible that they may wind up having some additional parking needs, depending on how the tenant mix shifts. We do have spaces in there that are not currently striped out, but easily could be to add additional parking if they need it, as things go.
Okay. Great. Thank you for answering that. Green space, traffic. As far as the trucks that would be used, are in your other facility, what size trucks are coming in and out of there for?
Great question. Typically, you're not going to see the full-size semis. I'm not going to say that they don't show up to our sites. What we typically see with a lot of the deliveries coming in and out, it's your flat box trucks or just, you know, your smaller vehicles.
Sprint vans.
Was that...
Sprint vans.
Yeah, yeah, just essentially, yeah, the sprint vans. We can accommodate, you know, the fuller-sized vehicles. And Becky's been working diligently for the pathways, which is why you see the spacing between the buildings as it is. But typically, you're not going to see the really, really large semis, so.
Okay. And have you decided on rental rates? How would those rates be determined? By size of the business? Will Amazon be charged a larger price than, say, one of our residents that may have a very small business that's trying to get going off their feet? How are those prices would be ranging?
A good question. Again, I can speak to what I know, so I will. But mostly, our rental rates are based on the square footage. It's also based on the inclusion of a restroom and just, you know, if it's going to be the office, that's going to be a slightly different rate. It's not going to be by industry, though. It won't be by the usage of that particular space. It's not based on that.
Okay. And I did have on here what were the square footage itself of a lot of the different ones that you were having. So they're going to be different. They are going to be different square footage.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And that's what happens when you're next to the last. All the questions are answered. Thank you.
All good questions.
Great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. My only question is, do you feel like you're being required to have more parking spaces than you'll actually need for this project with this?
I don't feel like we've got too many right now. I think it's a good mix, based on my looking at some of the sites that they've already built. I think it's about an appropriate number of parking spaces. Again, we did try to design in some flex space so that in the future, if they need to add some, they can do so.
Okay. I'm only saying, because there is so much concrete there, if you feel like you're being required more parking spaces than you'll actually need...
Right.
We have reduced parking requirements for other projects.
Honestly, the most of the open pavement that you see there is so that there's access, where there needs to be access, for the businesses to bring delivery vans in and out, and also so that if something ever happens, the fire department can get through there easily.
Okay. Well, will you have most of your, like, AC condensers on grade for all of these buildings?
I think the equipment is mostly ground-mounted for these buildings at the rear. I know the transformers are. The ones that are up near the frontage, that stuff will either be screened or possibly roof-mounted, depending on how they decide to configure the buildings. I don't believe we've detailed designed all that yet for every step.
Okay. For the final site plan, I'd like to see what the plan is for any of those units.
Right.
And then for the front elevation, that horizontal siding, is that going to be metal or what type of material are you thinking for that?
Are you referring to the top horizontal?
Yeah.
Again, that's where there's some flexibility in that. I believe this exhibit is showing more of like a wood type, but there are some cities that would want more metal or a different kind of material that is compromised on that. So, yeah, we have flexibility on the top of what that could be.
Okay. I'm kind of on the same page with Mona. I like everything below the horizontal and above it, just it's too heavy with the horizontal just dominating the elevation. I'd like to see more detailing and a little bit more of a refined look for those front elevations. And I know it's not really open to the public, but again, once these are built, they might be here 50, 60 years. So something that's eye-appealing would greatly... And I'm 100% behind this project. I think it's a great idea. I think it's great, the plan that you have. I just, like, I was just hoping a little bit more eye appeal there. But other than that, I think it's a great idea. I do like the tenant mix that you provided for us. 100% behind it. So are there any other further comments or questions? No? Okay.
I'd just like to say, I think you chose a great engineer there. She seems to be really on the ball.
She's on it.
Thank you.
Good job.
Very pleased.
I remember Becky with FedEx, so she was a star back then, and I'm not surprised that she's here now.
Yes.[1758.62] Yes. Good job.
Well, we love the communities we work with, and, you know, we want you to be happy to see me coming back again with another project, so.
Come back again.
We aim to please.
Okay.
One other question. So I think I'm hearing it, but the retention pond is like a public-use facility?
Essentially, yes. It's not completely public in that not everybody in the entire world can put water in there, but it is designed and required to accept water from basically these five developments around the FedEx property. So the MDOT site, this site, and there's some vacant land next to us that will be presumably a future project. All of those are going to be drained at the same time. May I have a motion?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I think we're looking at number two.
Between our first suggested and our second suggested motion here, the difference between the two...
Is that it comes back to the planning commission on the number two one.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like it, I'd like the project to come back so that we can verify.
I would concur with that. I think that was the way we wanted to be written. But we wanted to give you the option, depending on what you heard today and how comfortable you were. But knowing the fact of, again, I go back to this whole MUD district in regards of certain requirements and regulations and plus the development agreement, so you're going to be asked to do a lot of homework in between all of this, so it's good.
All right, then I would like to make a motion to approve the preliminary site plan SPR 2207 from RISE Commercial District, Office Warehousing and Storage on Vanguard Drive, parcel identification number 6414330255122 and 1, I'm sorry, 112 and 113, and allow the planning commission to grant the final site plan approval based on final technical review and MUD development agreement.
Yes, Commissioner Parlov.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Northcross.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Payne.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Shepard.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner DeVal.
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner McGinnis.
Yes, to approve.
And Chair Fegley.
Yes, to approve.
Okay. Seven zero.
How about that? Congratulations.
Good job. Thank you.
Go team!
Okay. Go RISE!
Go RISE.
Next on the agenda is the, agenda is the Planning Commission Orientation Special Meeting. Do we just need a vote on that for the date?
Yes, if that would be, that would be great. Will we be doing election of officers at that meeting, too?
Yeah.
Chair and vice chair?
Yeah.
With the 20th work for everybody?
That's fine.
It doesn't for me, but I'll make it work. I do the Main Street Pontiac Community Monthly Meeting every Wednesday, that same...
Third Wednesday, third Wednesday in a month. Of course, I should have known that.
But I will try to get a replacement for that night.
And I will, I will not be available on that date. I'm sorry.
Happy birthday to you, Ms. Parlov.
Uh-oh.
That's right. The big one this year.
Do we want a different date then?
Do you want to do it the following Wednesday, which would be what? The, it would be a week before the planning commission meeting in May. So it'll be what, the 27th?
Yeah.
That would work out fine for me.
I can do that.
I have a class that should have ended by then and turned in my final project.
I'm available the 27th.
Okay.
Okay.
Twenty-seventh, then?
Yay, 27.
Okay.
Okay. If I can get a motion on that, too. So we'll have a special meeting on April 27th.
I make a motion to have a special meeting on April 27th for the Planning Commission Orientation.
That said, 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock, yes.
Not to add to your...
Perfect.
Okay, great.
Okay, so Commissioner Parlov?
Yes, to approve on the 27th of April.
Commissioner Northcross?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner DeVal?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner McGinnis?
Yes, to approve.
Chair Fegley?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner Shepard?
Yes, to approve.
And last, but not least, Commissioner Payne?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I will open public comments. If anyone would like to speak, feel free.
I do have a couple of announcements to make.
Sure.
Two things. We are going to be, there is a number of minor ordinance revisions that we're going to be bringing forward to you in regards of zoning text amendments, food vendor regulations, small box discount stores, i.e. Dollar General, Family Dollar.
Dollar, dollar, Happy Dollar, tiny Happy Dollar.
Paradise Dollar, whatever they call it. Driveway, driveway design standards. It's kind of interesting, DP, I was mentioning this to our subcommittee with Mike McGinnis, Council President McGinnis, in regards to the Economic Development and Planning Group, that we have standards in DPW in regards to right-of-way driveways, you know, from the sidewalk to the curb. We don't have them in our standards, so it's always been a disconnect, so we're going to be doing that. We are going to be spending more time in regards to non-residential building design, in regards to materials. We're seeing, it's kind of interesting, this whole aspect in regards to this whole metal paneling and stuff like that. Definitely got enough, I got enough of it in regards to dealing with it at Dollar General. So their mindset is, you know, we'll give you a little bit of flavor, and then we're just going to do the rest of it as metal. And so we're going to be looking at, like we do with EFIS in regards to minimizing that, so we might be minimizing kind of the, from a metal standing. Ground sign reviews, I'm sorry, I don't think my planning commission needs to worry about where the ground sign's going to go, so we're just going to do that administratively. And there is a number of expanded principal permitted uses and special land uses that we like to bake into our current ordinance, too. So there's going to be some minor changes to our ordinance and be more forthcoming, too, as we move forward. Also, on May 4th, just letting you know that at that planning commission meeting, I received today a draft of the West Huron Corridor study that I've been working with MSU students, graduate and undergraduate students as a practicum. So I have a, I'm reviewing it, and they're making final presentations at the end of April, and they're, they're very excited to come before you as a planning commission and to explain what they found in regards to their assessment, their analysis, and some recommendations as relates to West Huron Corridor stretching from Woodward Avenue to Telegraph, so. We probably also have some zoning map amendments coming before you. So we'll do the presentation first, and then we'll get into public hearing, too. But anyways, just FYI. Very excited for the report, to see, having you see it. Yeah.
Thank you.
The revamp of the master plan, I should say, the update of the master plan. Where are we in terms of kicking that off and getting that going?
If all goes well during budget discussions, I'm hoping to, either or or both, I put some extra dollars in for consultants or, and/or staff to help us move forward. I, every commission and every zoning board and everybody asked me the same question, and I agree. As I was trying to explain, our zoning ordinance is 2012, and we date back to kind of this older planning vision that we had for these large parcels. It isn't really real anymore. And same thing with our master plan. And we, I'm also working with, through our grants department, I did put a building capacity grant together, so I'm hoping to receive grants in regards of staffing also, maybe for a three-year period. So maybe I can save some dollars on the city's budget side. We meet with them like virtually every other month. They're coming in at the end of April, and I've baked in a number of positions there, too.
Great, thank you for that.
Yeah.
I should have written these down. I do have a suggestion that was passed on to me, and I think I'd like to pass it in. The use of a drone. Has the city considered purchasing a drone so that we can get an aerial shot of the areas that we're bringing here? I, I know that sometimes we've tried to use the satellite shots.
Yeah.
And then we've tried to, I've tried to augment that with things like Map, the Google Maps or the Apple thing. But just the thought that a drone might be a good way of...
Are you going to be the drone operator?
Haven't taken that course yet. But I was thinking of it. I know Oakland University does allow one to get a license.
There you go.
Plus, I can spy on my neighbors if I have one.
Maybe, maybe I can bake it into my budget, too. You never know. Or I can suggest maybe council would be, you know, willing to put it in their budget.
No comment.
How do we, how do we get master plan, a copy of a master plan? Should we all have a copy of that?
You should. It's, it's online.
Just online?
Yeah.
We don't have a hard copy of that?
Uh, no. I don't. I'd be more, I'd be more than happy to make one for you. I can get that.
That's fine. So it's just, it's going to be on the Pontiac?
Yes, yeah, it's on there, yeah. Okay, that was it.
Okay.
I have two announcements. Our District Five will be meeting April the 14th at 6 o'clock here in the Lions Den here at City Hall. All are invited. And on the 23rd of April...
April, the month we're in?
Yes. District Five will be, we will be doing our cleanup, citywide cleanup.
Great.
And so we're asking for volunteers. It doesn't matter, if you don't know what district you're in, just call me and see me, okay? You can surely work with us. And I'd like to thank the, we're having trees planted. What's the name of the?
Rotary.
Gold and Wash.
Not Gold and Wash, but...
Rotary, thank you.
The Rotary has donated 100 trees to the city to be planted in our parks, and so I'd like to thank them personally for that. Also, those will be planted, I think District Five, Galloway Lake, will be receiving 11 of those trees. And those trees will be planted on that Wednesday, so at 1:30. I have to confirm that, though. I think Tim did say 1:30. But just so, I'll be sending out emails on that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, and look forward to a big citywide cleanup. I can't wait for that event. I think it's going to be a great one. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there are no other public comments, oh, yeah.
To provide you updates, at the last month's planning commission meeting, there were a few actions that were taken that since have come to City Council, so I want to update this planning commission that the redevelopment-ready communities resolution was unanimously adopted, as well as a presentation given by Mr. Gustafson and Elizabeth King of MEDC. So that's a substantial update that deals with your purview. We also adopted the zoning map amendment related to 788 East Walton Boulevard. That recommendation had come out of this planning commission. And also, the City Council has scheduled a public hearing, two of them, for April 19th, Tuesday, April 19th, at 6 o'clock PM. One is for the establishment of an obsolete property rehabilitation district, and the other for an exemption certificate for that same location at 640 West Huron, which is the Webster Community Center project. Their site plan obviously had come through the planning commission recently, and so that would be something that the public will have an opportunity to weigh in on in terms of whether that district is established, and then if that certificate will be approved. And then the City Council, following that planning, that public hearing will then actively consider the matter. So I wanted to provide that update to you, since it's developments related to the planning commission. Thank you all for your continued volunteerism to help make our community better. It does not go unnoticed, AKA, I notice it. So I hereby thank you on behalf of all of the residents of Pontiac, including our District Seven, which has our East Side Community Meeting on Monday, April 11th, at 7 o'clock PM at Prospect Missionary Baptist Church. Open and welcome to all who would like to do some community building and neighborhood organizing, and just any information that you'd like to share. That's Monday, April 11th, 7 o'clock PM at Prospect Missionary Baptist Church. And you, since this last planning commission, you may have detected that there were a number of public engagement sessions regarding the Clinton River Trail and connecting that trail as it relates to Pike Street and the downtown thoroughfare in advance of the reconfiguration of the Woodward Loop. I can tell you also that at the Pontiac City Council Meeting of April 19th, the Michigan Department of Transportation will be presenting about their initial proposals for what that reconfiguration of the Woodward Loop would look like, which obviously has a lot of implications for the health and planning and development of our downtown and the entire city of Pontiac. So I just wanted to share those informational items for you.
That's great. And if I could piggyback on Councilman McGinnis's comment there in regards of MDOT coming in on the 19th, you said?
That's what they've presently scheduled, the Tuesday, the 19th of April.
We do. I think during the day on the 19th, as you know, as part of the Woodward Loop conversion, M59 is going to be totally reconstructed within the loop. And so they've had some preliminary plans that they want. It's kind of more internal to be reviewing, so if I get any information or able to pack up information, I'd be more than happy to share that with you, too, at the time.
I have a question about that. Since they're going to be redoing Huron Street, are they going to do it where they don't have to close the road? That road has been closed so many times. It feels like in the last year, two years. When they, when they reconstruct it, do you know how long that will last? Did they give you...
As part of Huron Street, or are you talking about...
You said it's going between the loop, they're reconstructing.
Yeah, they are. I haven't heard. I'll probably find out more information here in a couple of weeks.
Okay. And they put it on the speedy fast track. Doesn't bother them.
There's been some utility issues, and I've seen McLaren has done a beautiful job in regards of their building, but it's taken a little while. All good things take time, right?
That's right.
Okay, that's it.
All right. I'm going to close public comments, and may I have a motion to adjourn for the evening?
I make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.